Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Middleborough School Committee meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Again, if people have questions, you can put the questions in the box and we will try to get to them. The one thing I would ask tonight is, we sort of gave the principals a break tonight. The superintendent and I decided that the principals didn't need to be here tonight, primarily because they've been working so hard, so they will be back. You can obviously email them to ask your questions, but this will be more a district-wide question if people have those questions. And with that, I'm going to move on to the agenda. Any member wish to talk about anything not on tonight's agenda? Ms. Farley?
Per usual, right? I just wanted to kind of give a shout out to our community, because I'll tell you, I've been seeing so many other communities around just not being as supportive as the district, to the district as you could be. And I've seen parents supporting other parents on our parent pages. I've seen offers for help with childcare. I've seen, just, I could give you so many stories. And I just, I just kind of wanted to say, this community is really something else and something amazing. And I'm just so proud to live here. And I say that all the time, but I just really want to do a shout out on that and just say to thank you to everybody.
Thank you for that. Anyone else have anything they want to bring up? Okay. Mr. Rowe will be joining us a little later. He had an issue earlier today, so I know he's going to join us later. But the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. So, Mr. Lynch, I will turn it over to you.
I think that Mr. Cutino is here.
Oh, okay. I didn't get that. Oh, wait a second, I did. Okay, please. Mr. Cutino, welcome. I didn't get a note that you were here. And I think you're on mute, Frank.
Frank, you're on mute.
I'm mute, Frank.
There we go. Sorry about the delay. I thought that I had joined just before seven o'clock, but when I fired everything up and figured out what I had done wrong, you had already started, so. I don't really have a whole lot, because we're, of course, in negotiations, so I don't really want to talk a lot about that. But I do, you know, look forward to fruitful negotiations for the reopening. And, you know, our goal is yours, is just to make sure that we have a safe reopening of the schools for all students, staff, and everyone else that's involved in that. Just trying to protect ourselves from the situation, so we don't get on the governor's bad side, I guess, and become, you know, like some of those red communities on the map, hoping that we can avoid that sort of stuff. So, look forward to tomorrow's meeting.
Same here, Frank. We've had some good conversations over the past couple of meetings, so I look forward to that continuing tomorrow.
All right.
Thank you, Frank. Then now I'll turn it over to Mr. Lynch. So, thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Good evening to everyone in the Middleborough community also who is tuning in tonight. I just wanted to provide some updates on exactly where we are in terms of our plan. As you know, the Middleborough Public Schools will reopen our physical and virtual doors in September with a focus on well-being, relationships, and learning. We'll offer three main learning models for our students and families: full in-person for our highest needs, a hybrid learning model with cohorts, and an online learning academy for a remote-only option. Our plan has been submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DEES, as we all know it. Following last week's vote, it's also posted on our website. Please also note that it is a live document, and as new information comes out and guidance is received from the state, it's added to the document. Best example of this would be recent health guidance that came out. Paula Magnasco, our nearest coordinator, was working on that today and working on preparing edits to be placed into the plan and sent out. As we said at the beginning, it's a fluid document and will continue. As Mr. Cutino mentioned, who was president of the Middleborough Education Association, the school committee continues to negotiate with the teachers. They're ongoing and they'll continue tomorrow morning. And we look forward to that meeting and we look forward to hopefully fruitful results. Our admissions, excuse me, we continue to check with our folks at home through question and answer and surveys. And we have additional information that will be with you tonight. I want to let you know that our administrators continue to work hard at the building level, developing plans and protocols for each building. To that end, Dr. Gates coordinated a question and answer session a week ago Tuesday, and that was well-received and well-attended by the folks in the community. Our online Q and A gets larger every day and remains online for everyone to go see. Perhaps before asking a question or two, their question may already be answered on the website. But we do not, we'd like, if you can't find an answer, we'd love you to certainly ask. As the school committee knows, on the August 10th meeting, you basically endorsed and authorized a survey to go out to parents to specifically ask about their intentions with regard to the online learning academy, so that the district could get a good idea of the numbers of people that are going, that want to keep their children home, for whatever reason that might be. And we have some results of that survey. Again, Dr. Gates is primarily responsible for this survey. She worked hard with Sean Siciliano, who is not here tonight. We thank Dr. Gates for stepping in tonight and running this meeting. And we appreciate her being there. We welcome her to the stage so that she can provide for you sort of a summary of the results that she's been able to garner.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. I'm going to do a screen share here, which is my first time doing this while also facilitating the broadcast. Hopefully, things turn out well. All right. Excellent, thank you. So, we did have our online learning academy survey open for over, for a week. We have allowed some additional contributions to the survey as needed from families. And what we have here is our data as it currently stands. You can see the breakdown of the number of online learning academy students by school, just to give you a comparison to what the current enrollment is, so you can see the percentage of students that have chosen the online learning academy. We feel that these numbers are supportive of our model in being able to deliver a robust online learning academy, but also providing for the appropriate safety and spacing within our buildings for the hybrid model. Can take a look at the survey data broken down by grade level, so you can see the distribution across the grades. Again, it's, you know, pretty comparable from one grade level to the next, which is nice to see. In our survey, we also asked our families to just share with us what the reason was for choosing the online learning academy. And we certainly respect the decisions of our families, because no one knows better about this, the safety and well-being of their own children than do our parents and guardians. But it's just interesting to look at the distribution of reasons as to why families chose the online learning academy. And then lastly, just what we had learned from the, from this survey was just the needs of our community with respect to technology for the online learning academy. So, that's important information that we will be acting upon to begin looking at the distribution of the available devices, which I would just like to remind the community that we had all intents and purposes of having a device for each and every one of our students, but due to some unforeseen circumstances, that order has been delayed. But please be rest assured that we will respond appropriately to the needs in our community and make sure that those that are in need are provided the resources to support high-quality education as delivered by the excellent educators in the community of Middleborough. That's all I have from that brief survey, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Melanie, just to be clear, the delay in the devices is at the federal level with the federal government. It has nothing to do with delay in ordering or in the shipping or in the manufacturing. It has to do with the federal government putting a delay themselves on these, on these devices.
That's mostly correct, Chairman Young. Mr. Siciliano and I did have a meeting the other day with both the company to which we are purchasing the devices from, as well as the manufacturer themselves. And they shared with us that the delay is attributed to the fact that we are no, we are not importing goods that have been created using forced labor. And there is a part or two from the specific Chromebooks that we ordered that were being manufactured by a company that was using forced labor. Our chosen manufacturer has now rebooted their entire manufacturing process to take that, that source out of their pipeline in support of, obviously, human rights for all and providing an appropriate manufacturing pipeline to create their products. I'm hopeful to get some updated information towards the end of the month, as the manufacturer has had time to adjust their manufacturing process and therefore be able to update their orders. And this impacts us not only for the 2,000 Chromebooks that we ordered, and I'm staring at the purchase order right now that was transmitted back on June 26th. It had nothing to do on our part. It has nothing to do with our chosen vendor, and it has nothing to do really with the manufacturer other than the poor practice of that one sub-manufacture that they were using. But that situation has been resolved, and I'm hopeful that the devices can come in within a reasonable time period. But I know it will not be for the start of school, unfortunately.
But Chairman Young, just to add to the date with the timing, we did order these in June. So, we ordered them, I checked today that the order was in place about eight weeks ago.
No, I appreciate that. Mr. Oakley, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you very much, Melanie, for the survey results. I think they're really interesting, but I wanted to focus in on the last piece there about devices needed. And I saw, it looked like 341, if I counted quickly, online learning academy students that would need devices and 22 hotspots. And I wondered, does, do we know anything about the, those that are hybrid when they're on their remote days, if they'll also need, you know, devices? Or are we counting that all as one and the same?
That number, 341, is only with respect to the online learning academy, and it represents all of the students that chose the online learning academy that need a device. So, that is not inclusive of our hybrid learning students. And, you know, just crunching the numbers with our network manager over the last several weeks, you know, this information is obviously important for us to consider in that, but I feel we are going to be in a pretty good position to make sure that all that have needs are taken care of. We are also working on another purchase of some additional tablets. That was our chosen device for the MEK. And I'm working right now with a vendor to secure an additional purchase of those tablets, which will help enable us to have more Chromebooks and laptops available for our 1 through 12 students.
Great, thank you very much.
Ms. Farley, I know you had a question, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Melanie, should the high school students expect to still be, have a device given to them when they start school, whether they're online or hybrid?
Yes, they should. And, you know, if students do happen to have a device and they feel comfortable bringing it to school, we are going to allow for the bring-your-own-device model as well. So, if anyone in the community can allow their child to bring their device to school, that would help us to accommodate others in our community who may be in need.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Gates? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Gates. We really appreciate it, especially you telling us what the remote academy is going to look like. I do, I do have one question that came in. I know we've answered it in the past, but I do want to bring it up. Will students have to bring their own or does the school supply Chromebooks devices for the students?
So, just to, you know, summarize that again, we do intend to provide a device for all who are in need. So, if there are children in our community that do not have a device, we will make sure that a device is in their hands. If children, if there are, if there is a device available in the home and families feel comfortable with their child using it, you know, it would be, it would be helpful for us. That way, we can ensure that our students that are in need are provided with a device. But including Mrs. Farley's question, yes, we did intend on providing the one-to-one device for our high school students, because our families have become accustomed to that, and I do not want to change that for them, given our past practice.
And Melanie, if somebody in the room, who put in for the remote device and asked for a device, but now doesn't need that, who do they contact? Did they contact you or did they contact the principals?
Either is fine. If they contact me, that would actually be more efficient, because I can then update the records on my end as I'm getting ready to work with network manager to begin assigning devices for those in need, so we can prepare for the distribution.
And also, related to that, my assumption is, for those looking to buy their own device in whichever way, you will probably send out some guidance for families to know what they need.
It's actually pretty simple. Most of our programming really is web-based. So, if you have a device that allows you to get on the internet that has an up-to-date browser and you also have a camera for video conferencing, that device will more than likely work. It doesn't really matter what the brand is of the Chromebook or of the laptop. Again, it's just really the up-to-date browser and the ability to have a camera, and your device should be compatible with all of our programs. There could be some specialized programs at the high school. For example, our project Lead the Way Pathways. But again, if you have a, our high school uses Windows-based devices, so if you have a Windows-based laptop, you should be more than fine to engage with our variety of platforms and software.
And for our hybrid families, at some point, you'll be telling them how they can get a device if their family needs one?
Yes, I'm just waiting for the final work of our principals, who I'm just so appreciative of all the effort that they've put forward in creating the cohorts. They're doing so with a high degree of intentionality to make sure we're meeting the learning needs of our students. So, that information for our hybrid families is yet to come. I want to base the communications off of cohort designation so that we can also coordinate our plan for distribution.
Great. Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
This may be a question more for Superintendent Lynch, but given that we just saw some numbers on who signed up for the Remote Learning Academy and with the news yesterday of the flu mandate, my understanding is that, I know we just got it, but it does not exempt remote students. It only exempts homeschooling students. So, I saw some comments out there about will we be opening the registration back up for the online learning academy? And since, since that, that doesn't actually exempt anyone from anything, my guess would be no. Is that right?
Well, we, you know, we'd like to get a, we tried to get the best number we possibly could with this survey, because decisions are going to be made, next step decisions are going to be made with regard to determining how many remote teachers we need, at what level. So, this is our real hard effort to get the most accurate numbers we possibly can. Will there be some switching? Will people make decisions this week? And will we accept them? Yes, of course, we'll, we'll need to do that. But the reality is, you are correct, that the limited, I've read the guidance over once and skimmed it twice with regard to the guidance that came out again yesterday on the flu vaccine. And we don't have a lot of answers as a district right now on that. There will always be religious exemptions, and those will continue to be, as I understand them. And so, that's, we'll get into, have to get into the details of that, how that affects remote learning. I don't think it should really, because remote learning students will be Middleborough Public School students, so they'll need vaccines if that's what's determined at the state level. You know, that was a curveball that came in yesterday, a knuckle curveball that we didn't expect to come in. I was on a call with the commissioner at one o'clock yesterday, and I know Dr. Gates was on that same call. And that took a lot of us, most of us, if not 100% of the superintendents and curriculum directors and assistant superintendents from across the state, very much by surprise. There was, there was no way knowing that was coming. So, we still have to put our heads together around that and integrate that into the rest of our decision-making, but.
So, I just want to make it clear to this. We realize it's a, it's a, the state put out a policy again yesterday. I just had a brief look, as the superintendent did. I know some of the members had. We will have a discussion about this at some point, because we're gonna, we're gonna, we are going to make sure that people know what they need to do. No one is required to have it until the end of December. That's the piece I know. As far as the paperwork and everything like that, what you're required to give, we'll have that conversation in one of these meetings when we have all sorted it out. And to be honest with you, given that this just dropped yesterday, you know, everybody's focus has been on making sure that school can start the first day, that we have school and what we need and the professional development for teachers. And that's really where the focus should be on. But we will make everyone aware as soon as we can. The only thing that I did note, and it is noted in the guidance somewhere along the lines, is that the, August is not one of the days to get a flu shot. They recommend it happen in September, October, and that's why it went out until December. So, that's the only thing I want to say about that. But we will discuss that at some point, when we have some time. So, it wasn't on tonight's agenda, given that I have to create the agenda early and everything dropped yesterday, so we'll deal with it. But we'll let everyone know, in the community, know when we know.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem. Any other questions for the superintendent or Dr. Gates on this issue? Mr. Lynch?
Well, the next up on my report is the policy on facial coverings. This is a second read, and this goes to you, committee.
So, the thing that I wanted to bring up for the committee and tonight for a vote is the extension of facial coverings. We are required to do it second grade on up, and it's the extension from preschool through second grade. I do this for a couple of reasons. One, it has been an ask of the union as part of our negotiations. In doing some research about it, that's the recommendation of the American Pediatric Society, which is we're following their recommendations for the three-foot guidelines too. When we had a conversation with Carolyn Lyons, as she said, the summer program is using the masks exclusively, and they've not had a problem. So, I felt the need to bring that up, given all those pieces. So, I open it up for discussion. Mr. Oakley, sorry.
Yeah, sure. I guess I just wanted to reiterate what, what I believe, I think we touched on at the last meeting, especially when we heard from Carolyn, was, I think I myself, just as one member of this committee, was, was kind of leaning towards maybe, you know, no masks for, for those younger kids. But after hearing, and that was mainly from anecdotal, you know, stories of, it's really difficult for some younger kids. But after hearing from Carolyn Lyons about her experience, it sounds like it wasn't a big deal. And it would just be even better, I think, to prevent spread, even though there's quite a bit of evidence out there that younger kids are less affected. But I just wanted to reiterate that we heard kind of, we had our own little experiment here in Middleborough, and it seemed to point towards masks are okay.
Other comments or questions? I mean, this is a thing we discussed at the last meeting. So, just so everyone knows, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Meg and Teresa, the policy subcommittee is going to meet next week. We don't necessarily have to bring up the third reading for next week. Obviously, we're going to have a conversation a little later to meet every week from then on forward. But we're, so we don't have to necessarily bring up the third reading next week. We can wait a week. But so, there is still steps in the process to do that. So, again, chair and entertain a motion to make it K through 12, preschool through 12 for the mask policy.
So moved.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second?
I have a second. Again, thank you for that. And again, it's, because we're doing this doesn't mean it happens immediately. It means that it still has to go through subcommittee and also has to go through a third reading, so there is still a point during the day. Any other?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Might you suggest to the policy subcommittee that they develop the amendment language on policy EBC-FA, face coverings?
No, I figured I'd leave it up to them. It's just a question of making sure that that's the will of the committee, if you will.
Yep.
I'm just seeing a question, so. So, what's the, what's the plan for phasing them out? So, just so everyone understands, the mask or state guideline, more than likely, we'll be following the state guideline until the state tells us we don't have to do, do it. This has nothing to do with the flu season. This, again, was a piece that was established prior to, it was part of the state guidelines that we had out. Again, the question is, what happens if someone doesn't wear a mask during the day? You know, it'll be, it will be the responsibility of adults in the building to make sure students are wearing masks. Clearly, there is exceptions to the mask rule, if I'm correct, right, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, there are certain, certain documented exceptions.
And someone asked if gators were allowed. I know the study came out that said they weren't effective, but I don't believe gators are not allowed in the current state policy. Am I correct on that?
We would have to check that, but I know they're, they're not. My, everything that I know right now says that masks are much more effective. And that gators are not as effective. So, that's not, and that can be something that the policy subcommittee takes up again on Monday in the meeting, if you'd like. We could certainly include that on the agenda. The current policy is, as it reads, if you don't mind, if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parent, guardians, family to determine whether an exception is appropriate or the student may be, may be removed from the school building for in-person remote learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted.
Mr. Lynch, can you just talk a little more about what the exceptions are? Somebody asked that question.
Yep. Individuals may be excused from the requirement for the following reasons per CDC guidance. The individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated, or cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance. In addition, masks or face coverings will not be required for anyone who has a medical, behavioral, or other challenge making it unsafe to wear a face mask or face covering. A written note from a physician is required for a requested exemption. Parents may not excuse their child from the face mask requirement by signing any type of waiver.
Just so everyone understands, our policy that we're talking about comes straight from the state guidelines. We've been caught, well, so what happened is, the policy was developed by the mask association and school committees. It was vetted by their attorneys and sent out to each individual school committee. We reviewed it, had a, I had a conversation with our attorney to make sure that pieces were there. And the other piece is the commissioner, at a meeting with the superintendents, gave the school committees leeway to extend the mask guidelines. Correct, Ms. Lynch?
Correct.
So, with that, are there any other questions for members of the committee? Seeing none. This will be a roll call vote. I think I've answered all the questions that were on the comment board. So, Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley? And the chair votes aye. So, next item, Mr. Lynch?
Next item is new policy, EBC-S. It's a policy on COVID-related issues, and this is a first reading. And this, again, goes back to the committee.
So, this particular policy, again, came from Mass Association, the school committees. It essentially outlines, the main outline of this is that there are obviously school committee policies that we normally follow during the year. But in the event of emergency, pieces can be waived. And this piece is only going to be there for the duration of the issues with COVID. So, for example, one of the policies we have is that students need to pass MCAS in order to graduate. Obviously, given the guidelines that the state has, even though the state waived MCAS, the superintendent and principal can waive MCAS based on state guidelines. It's essentially. It's essentially so we don't have to constantly vote to alter our rules based on something that the state's coming down with. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, just had a quick question for you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I wondered on, in the section that's called Student Assignment to Schools File JCA, I just wondered if if you could give a little background on this. My main question, it, it, well, actually, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Can you explain a little bit about what assignment to schools means and how that will be affected by this?
Sure. Brian, do you have a, I'm going to try to bring it up so I can look exactly what you're looking at.
It says, "Subject to the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the superintendent may suspend or revise the assignment of students to schools, including the assignments of new students for such a period as the emergency declaration is in force." I believe, my, my understanding of this, this section of JCA and this section of policy EBC dash S refers to a situation where we might have a second grade situation where we have 50 students who, or 55 students who are students that identify that they want to be remote. That's a big class size if we divide it up between the schools of the 28 or 27. We like to get our class sizes a little bit lower. That would speak to the issue of creating perhaps a third class that would be a combination of students from both the Mary Kay Good School and the Henry B. Berklin School, and they would not, that they're, so their school assignment would change based on the emergency, if you will.
Got it. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions that have come up? And again, this is the first time we put it out, and so our usual protocol is that it is, it'll obviously go to a subcommittee on Monday. They'll have a review. We'll have a second and a third reading. But Rich, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask on, what is this, page one, two, three? This is on page four, at the top of page four. It just says pivoting back to remote learning or back to in-school instruction. And oops, sorry, I'm on the wrong, I'm on the wrong question. If you go down just a few more from that, eligibility for participation in extracurricular activities, this is file JJ. I just wanted to ask, how does this work, how does this work? I know, obviously, the, the policy subcommittee is going to have to talk about this, especially with what came out yesterday with the flu mandate, because I believe the flu mandate makes a distinction between homeschooled students and remote students. And prior to all of this, it was my understanding that homeschool students could take part in extracurricular activities. And I wondered if we were going to have to change this language a little bit to, to allow for this new mandate.
So let me give, I know Ryan's going to have be on, but one of the things that talks about is, so, for example, there is currently a rule, Rich, which says that students can only participate in three seasons of sports. Okay? So the, you know, typically, it's the fall, the winter, and the summer. Because the state has established a fourth season of sport, that would be one of the things that we would have, that he would be allowed to adapt. If the state allows kids to participate in four seasons of sports, then he could change our, our normal policy that adheres to what MIA rules are. As far as you, you were saying about homeschooling, as far as the flu vaccine, I don't have any idea. We haven't got that far yet since we started yesterday, Rich. But I think the other piece is, my understanding of homeschooling is there's language in there that says something along the lines of if they're available. It, it's not that anyone's guaranteed to do anything. It's, it's more like if they're available, if, if the, if there are slots available and programs available. So that's, it's not a broad statement that you automatically get to do things. It has a different wording.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Those are the only questions I had. Otherwise, it looks like a great policy, and I look forward to seeing what the policy subcommittee comes up with.
Okay. Other questions? Then we're not going to do anything with this, because it's the first reading. We just move on from there.
So we're going to move on, Mr. Chair, to the updated 2021 school year calendar. You have that copy with you, or you should have it in your, your Dropbox. This is reflective of a 10-day required professional development session at the beginning of the school year, which would begin on August 31st and go to August 14th, excuse me, September 14th. That would be the 10 days. This would begin the school year for students on the 15th with the plan that we'd probably do a two-and-two cohort, split that week, two-and-two, but would have, that still get to be decided, but that would be the plan, I would think. So we move forward with this calendar, and this actually features the professional development day before February Vacation Day and after the February Vacation Day, which is contractual and, and required with regard to the move into the new high school as, as determined by negotiations last year. Vacations would remain traditional, in that they would be the February vacation and the April vacation. And basically, the calendar would, would fairly, remain fairly the same. We'd be losing release days, et cetera, because we substituted the 10 days prior to. Mr. Chair, it's back to you.
So the only thing I want to say is, this is the longest calendar I have ever been involved with in my life, because we started this trial process last year in trying to set this up for the new high school. So I appreciate your efforts on this, Mr. Lynch.
Oh.
You know, going back and forth. Does anyone have any particular questions about the calendar? Ms. Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought that the teachers needed, or their contract cut the Friday before Labor Day off. And it looks like it's that they're going to PD that day on the 4th.
I can certainly check. I don't know if the contract speaks to that day or not. We can certainly check.
Okay, thank you.
It's a very good question. Why didn't somebody ask another question, and I'll, I'll come back with that answer?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Oakley.
I think I heard the answer to this, and sorry, it was cutting out a little bit, but that first week of school being just four days, I think, I just heard Mr. Lynch say, would it just be two and two for the two different cohorts? Is that how it's going to be?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We're just going to wait on this one particular piece. Thank you for
Yeah, I just received confirmation from Mr. Coutino that that is not in the contract, that Friday before Labor Day. That's just something, something we've done as a courtesy for a nice four-day weekend when we started before Labor Day.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions about the calendar? Then hopefully, this is the last time we see this calendar and never have to produce again, but the chair wants to stand a motion to accept the calendar as presented. So, any further discussion? Then I'll go around. Ms. Farley? Miss, I assume you said aye? I think you are on mute.
Aye, sorry.
Stevens? Ms. Janess?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Back to you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We are, our next up is our Ryan Sylvia, who's our athletic department director. And he is going to talk about some new news that came out this week. More guidance coming out this week, but this is some guidance that we've been anticipating with regard to fall sports. And he has provided you with an outline. I sent the most recent updated outline via email because there were slight changes in it. But I would welcome Ryan Sylvia, our athletic director, and, and ask him to, to take you, to take this committee through this and the community, through this outline and with recommendations from the athletic department. So welcome, Ryan Sylvia.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. And as far as the, the outline goes, I apologize for coming in so late. It's just, as with everything with this situation, we're getting new information all the time, and a lot of this just came out yesterday. So I'm kind of approaching this update and this outline with the same way I approached the summer program. I feel like it's my, my job to present all of the information and everything that we are allowed to do from the state level and the state guidance, and up to us as administrators and the school committee to make the decisions on whether or not we move forward with these guidelines and recommendations. So I also kind of want to preface it with, there's still many variables that we need to be discussed and hashed out. And, you know, we're going to constantly be getting updates over the next 10 days before we get to that, that September 1st date, when the new modifications come out, and then, and then obviously, September 18th, which is right now the start date for fall sports. So I'm just going to go through the outline here, starting with the guidance we received from the EEA, DESI, and MIA, and with, in regard to remote and hybrid learning. The Department of Education is requiring school committee approval to allow students and districts that are in a remote learning-only structure to participate in athletics. And my request is that Middleborough allows students to participate in athletics if they are in our remote learning academy or learning remotely under the hybrid model or through homeschooling. So that was kind of the first item is, I think that's a starting point for us. And I don't know if we want to move completely through everything and then come back, or is that something that we wanted to, we can stop and discuss as we move through?
We'll come back and ask questions and go through.
I guess that question is for Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so I would just go through everything, Ryan, and then we'll come back.
Okay. So next is the participation piece, which we intend to offer athletic opportunities at all levels, middle school, freshmen, JV, and varsity, based on the current guidelines. Middle school sports may need to be reduced to an intramural level based on availability of opponents. Requests to file middle school waivers in the fall sports have, for all fall sports have already happened to allow students to play at the lowest level. And that's something that we do every year, and we base it off the numbers that we have participating in each group. That would be new for the fall. We've done it in the past in wrestling, swimming and diving and, and other sports. Some important dates that we have coming up, September 4th, 1st, we'll get the final guidance for sport modifications from the MIAA. September 4th is when we were looking to open registration for fall sports. September 18th is when the fall season starts. And then the other dates that I have listed there for the winter, the fall two season, which I'll touch on in a minute, and then the spring season. So I don't think we need to, to go through those yet. The Department of Education and MIA identified, or I'm sorry, the, the EEA identified some sports as high-risk sports, which would not be able to compete at the current time. And those sports are football, competitive cheer, and unified basketball. Those sports, under the current guidance, would be allowed to practice within the guidelines, but not compete because of the physical nature of the sport. And they would be moved to what they're calling the floating season, and that floating season would be taking place starting February 22nd, immediately following the winter season, and going through April 25th. So something else that we would want to discuss and approve is whether or not we want to allow those sports that are high-risk to be allowed to practice only under the guidelines that were issued. So, for example, football would be able to practice a specified number of times per week. Could be five or six times at a maximum, which is what we currently would do for other sports. It could be one or two times a week, and that would look a lot different than a typical football practice. It would be potentially no pads, potentially helmets only, potentially conditioning, strength training, and mental practice only, getting into formations, going over plays, things like that. And so that's, that's something that needs to be discussed, or whether or not we just say, you know what, those high-risk sports are not going to happen in any capacity. They're going to be moved to the fall two season. So moving on to fall schedules, assuming all of this starts up and we go forward and we approve these recommendations, the fall schedules, right now, we've had weekly meetings since we broke out in March with the South Shore League, which is the league that we're affiliated with, 10 schools in our region. And all of those schools have committed to maintaining scheduling games within the league. And we anticipate about a 12-to-16 game schedule per sport. There was one school district in the league that was listed as a red district last week, and they recently were downgraded to yellow. For those of you who don't know, if you're listed as a red district, you have to go remote only. And you're not allowed to participate in athletics, but that's kind of a fluid situation that's getting assessed on a weekly basis. So that could be something that changes throughout the season. So one of the school districts was red last week. Now they're yellow, so they're back able to start planning for the fall in a, in an in-person situation. If we can't get to that 12-game limit or that 12-game kind of aiming point, we would look at some other non-league regional schools, so schools like, that are just, you know, in close proximity to Middleborough but not within the league. So just for example, teams we've played in the past, West Bridgewater, Old Rochester, Aponequit, some local districts that we could, we could compete against. As far as the Nichols Middle School schedules, like I mentioned before, they would be more abbreviated based on the number of local middle schools offering athletic opportunities. We currently compete in a Massa Soyet League with nine schools, and that league has not met yet. That's happening next week to determine whether or not they're going to move forward with a league schedule. My recommendation for, for that piece would be if there's not significant number, a significant number of middle schools offering athletic programming, then we would look to do an intramural program or a modified intramural program in addition to the intramural program that we're already offering at Nichols, which would look something like offering all the athletic teams that we currently offer at Nichols, but only playing within our own school. So we would still have boy soccer. We would still have girl soccer, field hockey, cross-country, and we would create an experience that would be inter-team play and skills and drills and things like that. One thing that would have to be hashed out further with that is a fee structure that made sense so that we still have proper supervision with coaching. And also that we don't have numbers that are not manageable. If we keep a $25 fee structure for a five-day-a-week program, I think we would see a lot more participation at that level. And the same goes for, the same goes for the high school level. If we were at some point in time to be reduced to not competing, but still allowed to practice only, I think that's something that we would want to manage within the own, within our own school and the athletic department, if we're able to. So we would still run our practices, our skills, our drills, and inter-squad competition, but not travel and not play inter-team competition from other towns if we were reduced to, to have to do that based on the situation with COVID. Other points of emphasis that came from the MIA recently, and, and some of this I know is probably, people have already seen through, through the public, there will be no state tournament for the fall season. Out-of-season coaching will be allowed in all sports at any point in the year. So this is something that I've discussed with our principal and superintendent, and it's very important that as a athletic department and as a school, we develop a policy based on this rule change. Previously, if you were a basketball player in the school or in any school that's a member of the state association, you were only allowed to participate in basketball activities with your coach during the designated season. What happened with this change is now there is no restriction on that. So a basketball player could have, a basketball coach could run a team practice starting September 18th, you know, five days a week if they wanted to. Um, and a baseball coach could run a practice, you know, the same amount of time. So, uh, we're, we're, we're meeting with our league, um, membership, discussing this with administration and coming up with a policy before it goes into effect on September 18th, so we can manage the situation and make sure we don't have, uh, teams practicing and requesting to practice all over, uh, you know, the different facilities that we have in the district and, and town facilities and things like that. Um, so that's, there's more to come on that. Uh, sport modifications, you heard me mention that earlier. Um, on September 1st, uh, is when we will receive the final approval of the sport modifications from the MIA. So what I mean by that is every sport in the association has a committee of athletic directors, coaches, principals, administrators that oversees and governs that sport in terms of rules, um, and, and protocols and things like that. That's just under normal circumstances. So what they've been charged with is to come up with rule modifications that will be in place for the upcoming season based on the guidelines from the EEA and Department of Education. They're working on that now until the 25th. It will go forward to the board of directors at, at the MIA. And then the board directors will put the stamp on it on, on September 1st to let us know exactly how we're going to play these games under the guidelines. Uh, and, and really more specifically with, uh, it's all sports that are going to need to be modified. Things like staggered starts and cross-country, uh, potential for, uh, similar modifications that you've seen in youth soccer, um, with, you know, modified throw-ins, modified corner kicks. Um, basically everything they can do to limit contact. Uh, so I think that's what we're going to see on that end from the sport modifications. Um, and then they're all, the MIA has also been charged, their staff's been charged with creating professional learning opportunities for school staff and officials and return-to-play modifications, health and safety protocols, planning and implementing practice, uh, and facility and event management. Uh, one thing we've done, um, with our coaches who have been working our summer program is ask them to complete an online course that was created through the National Federation of High Schools. Um, that was, um, basically hitting all of these topics as far as how to get back into play, uh, under COVID-19 guidelines and really focusing more on, uh, social distancing, physical distancing, face coverings, hygiene, um, and, and just everything they can do to stay as safe as possible. So there's a, a, a nice compact online course that's free, uh, that our coaches were able to, to do. Um, so I kind of anticipate things like that coming from the MIA that may be required, similar to every coach right now has to take a concussion education course prior to the season. Uh, that's a requirement. So, I think we'll see something like that, uh, related to COVID coming out, um, which we've, which we've already done for the summer. Uh, this is kind of a long document, so I'm going to keep cruising through it. Um, season cut short. If any sport or s- school has a season cut short for any circumstance related to COVID, um, then we will have the opportunity to request that they move that sport to the fall two season or the floating season, uh, which again starts February 22nd and goes to April 25th. Um, somebody mentioned before the four-sport season, uh, because we have four seasons now with that floating season, uh, students would be permitted to participate in all four seasons. So if you had, um, a football player or a cheerleader who wanted to go out for a team this fall because their sport wasn't offered, they could do that. They could then play a sport in the winter and then play, um, their traditional fall sport in the floating season. Um, fall sports registration, I mentioned earlier, um, if everything goes as planned, then we would open that registration September 4th, which I believe is the Friday after the final modifications come out. It gives us a couple of weeks before the first practice date, which is September 18th to get everyone registered, uh, paid and, and ready to go. Um, physicals as of right now are still required within 13 months. So that's important for families. Uh, hopefully they've been on top of that. I know getting doctor's appointments is probably, uh, difficult right now. Um, there has been discussion at the Sports Medicine Committee about waiving that rule. The problem is they need to get clearance from the Department of Public Health to do that. And the request, I believe, was to switch that to a 18-month policy rather than 13 months. Um, the MIA also came out with, uh, information that they are partnering with a company called Convenient MD. Uh, Convenient MD offers physicals for $20. Um, and they have, they have, I think, six locations, six to eight locations in Massachusetts. Um, the three that are closest to us, there's none really directly, uh, you know, and really close to Middleborough, but there's one in Pembroke, one in Falmouth and one in Quincy. So that's a potential option for someone looking to get a physical, Convenient MD. Um, for $20. Next is my user fee recommendation. Um, my recommendation at this point in time is to maintain the current user fee structure. So right now our structure is $175 per sport, um, with a $350 individual cap. So if you play two sports, um, you pay for two sports, any sport you participate in after that is no charge. Uh, $450 would be the family cap. So if you have multiple, um, children participating in athletics, you'd pay two user fees to get to your 350. Uh, if any member of the family participates in a third sport, uh, then you just pay the $100 to get to 450, and that's all you have to pay for the remainder of the season regardless of how many sports the, the students go out for, uh, after that. This, uh, I think we need to put some, some, um, parameters in place for the user fee structure because there's so much uncertainty around what we're trying to do. Uh, so what I propose with this structure is that, uh, if a sport is started and a competition is played, that there would be no refund for the user fee if the season gets cut short or if the season gets canceled. Um, part of that is that we would be, uh, most likely moving to a practice-only or intermural situation. So the activity would still be going on, um, but there just wouldn't necessarily be any competitions. Um, but we have to, I think, define how, how we would, uh, manage refunds if there's a cancellation. There's also a possibility of setting a, uh, specific date. Once we get past the perfect, uh, uh, certain date, whether it be October 1st, middle of October, whatever it might be. Um, next would be if a sport is moved to the floating season, the fee would carry over to that season. So the season gets canceled, we move it to the floating season. They do not pay the fee to, uh, continue participating in, in the floating season or start the season over in the floating season. If the season's reduced to practice only, there would be no refund. Uh, I already mentioned that if the season is terminated prior to the first competition, the fee would carry over to the next athletic season. So if the fee, I'm sorry, if the season gets terminated, uh, it's determined that we're not going to play for whatever the reason might be under the COVID circumstances prior to the start of, uh, competitions, then we would carry that fee over to the next season. Um, whether it be a winter, a different sport, a winter sport or the fall season or the spring season. That fee would not be refunded. It would be carried over to whatever the next sport is that the child, uh, signed up for. And then the last piece is, um, if a season's terminated prior to the first competition and the individual chooses not to participate in any other sport for the rest of the year of 2021, um, then those fees would be refunded prior to July 1. Um, so in other words, we'll, we'll manage all of these, uh, user fees and track exactly what's going on with each individual family. Uh, and then at the end of the year, we'll determine if there's any refunds that need to be issued based on the level of participation that we had throughout the year. Um, as far as intermural fees or, or, uh, Nichols Middle School fees, uh, that's a piece that also needs to be discussed in terms, I mentioned it before. Uh, if Nichols does go to a five-day, uh, intermural program where we're not competing, um, we're going to save some, some money on officials, buses, things like that. Um, but we do still have coaches and we would still need to, um, institute a fee for that, for that program, uh, that I think needs to be more than $25, uh, which is the current intermural fee because they're only meeting two or three days a week, uh, during the regular intermurals. Uh, and this would be a little bit more intensive. Uh, so I think we would need to increase that. Um, and, and I don't have a set recommendation for that at this time, uh, because I think we would need to determine exactly what that program looks like first. Um, facilities, my last piece for the athletics, the fall sports update is facilities. Um, and basically, uh, we expect to be limited to dawn-to-dusk activities in the fall, uh, because of the high-level risk of, uh, triple E right now that we're under in Middleborough. Uh, and I think Middleborough and Carver are right now the only two towns at a high risk. Um, we will only have one field on campus at MHS, um, and that's the Turf Stadium. Um, and without the ability to turn the lights on, um, it creates an issue, a facilities issue with how many teams can be participating, uh, at one time or how many teams can participate in a given day. So we would stagger practices and be able to get two or three practices in or a practice and a game in, uh, depending on what time of year, um, how late into the fall it is and, um, what we're actually practicing and how much time we need for each sport. So, uh, we're, we're, we're in a good place in the sense that we still have a positive relationship with the park department, which I'm going to touch on after we finish up the fall sports update. Um, and, uh, we have the ability to use the Field of Dreams field, potentially, uh, Batus Field, Pierce Playground Fields. Um, and, um, and the baseball field at Nichols Middle School. So we have some space over at Nichols that we can access too if needed. Um, so the, just kind of a, uh, informational piece there with the facility. And that, that's the basic summary of my fall sports update. I do have a couple of other items with the park department and summer athletic clinic, but I think, uh, I'm going to stop for a minute and just let people digest and see if they have any questions or concerns.
Just so everyone knows, so my plan right now, Ryan, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. We got everything today to look at. Um, as far as what you need voted on, my intention was to vote on it next week. Um, that shouldn't interfere with you any at all because you're plenty, you know, you still have time. And the other piece becomes, as you and I both know, other things may change in a week, so we have to do some things. So all the, at our next meeting, we will list, there'll be listed everything that we need to vote on that Ryan's asked us to, and we'll take those up at that time, if that makes sense. But please feel free to ask particular questions. Ms. Farley, I know you had a question.
I, I do. It actually is, um, and pertains to the summer program, which Ryan did not speak on. So I, I'm certainly willing to wait and see if anyone has any questions on everything else first, and then I can ask.
Okay. Um, Ryan, do, I guess the question I have, and I, I want people to understand too, that even though, um, the good part is sports are hopefully continuing. Uh, they've been adjusted to, uh, especially some of the, the, the more concerning sports were adjusted to a, a separate season. Um, but I also want to make mention to people that we still have another problem, and that other problem is transportation. Because the guidelines that we have to follow, uh, for going to school are also going to have to be followed for athletics. So we will have some more costs around transportation, uh, because for example, when it comes time, we can't bus the football team in the way that we've normally bussed the football team. So I just want to raise that for people, just so everyone knows and everyone understands. Ms. Farley.
Then I do have a question. Um, has there been any thought to, and I, I hate to say it because I want to see every kid playing, um, but given that there may be those, those concerns, would there be no sub-varsity possibility? So only varsity-level players would be able to play. I'm just putting it out there. I don't know if that's even something, and like I said, I want to see every kid out there, but we, that might be a possibility or a, a reality, really.
Ryan, go right ahead.
I would just say with that, um, that even if we have, so if it's a transportation issue, it becomes an issue of competition. Right? Like we're not going anywhere, uh, if we are just practicing and, and uh, participating in an intermural-type program, which I know kids, um, the fun part of athletics is being able to compete in a game. Um, but if it's the best we can do with budget restrictions, um, and I think we have to take a hard look at the transportation piece. I mean, I said it at the beginning, I, it's my job to present as much as we can possibly do here. Um, and if it has to get scaled back a little bit because, um, for whatever reason, then, then that's what, then we can go that route. Um, the possibility of, of varsity only is being discussed at our, at our league level too. I mean, that's sub-varsity is a, is a big concern because, um, we don't know the numbers that are even going to register for athletics and, and who's going to be interested in coming out and playing. So, um, that's why I said at the beginning, a lot, there's a lot of variables and everything needs to be kind of shaken out, and it's going to constantly change.
Uh, Ryan, I just want to make clear on one piece. Since there is the quote-unquote "practice season" for football, followed by the real season for football. Um, from a conversation you and I had, and I think you briefly mentioned it, but I want to be able to clear with it. So a football player could choose to play a fall sport and not be off the football team. He would essentially be off the practice of the football team, correct?
Correct. Um,
And the other piece too, as a plus, um, this is probably the first time since the eighties that a student could be a four-sport athlete. Because we haven't had that for quite some time.
My, my son has wanted to play football forever, but he never could because he's been a soccer player his whole life. So to be honest, he's, he's actually a little bit excited. He said, "I can do soccer and football this year." So it'd be interesting to see, but.
I will add that, um, we kind of categorized the majorettes as, uh, athletes and with, under the athletic program. So the ma- if you're a majorette, you can actually participate in majorettes and three-sport seasons. That's the only, the only exception.
Okay.
We've had a few majorettes that have also been three-sport athletes. So that's kind of, kind of a cool.
Very cool.
Mr. Rob.
Uh, Mr. Sylvia, thank you very much for this. Uh, it looks like a, an excellent plan, and I look forward to, um, assuming no new information comes out, to, to voting next week to approve, uh, all of this. It looks really great. Um, I, I had one question. It's really just my lack of understanding of the, the, the waiver, uh, that you mentioned, but up in section, right towards the beginning, in section 1 dot 3, or 1 dot 2, rather, um, you just said that there'll be a request to file middle school waivers in all fall sports to allow for students to play at the lowest high school level offered. And I just wondered if you could explain that to me as, as someone who doesn't really know much about that piece of it.
Sure. So currently there's a rule, uh, with, with the MIA that, um, middle school students in order to play on high school teams, so freshmen, middle school students that wanted to play on a freshman team, JV team or varsity team, um, they're not allowed to do that unless you file a waiver with the, uh, your local district, uh, which is District 9 for us, and then, uh, with the MIA, and it has to be approved by our ath- our district athletic committee. Um, so basically if, it, it's really based on numbers. So say we did not have enough, um, students to participate on the JV boy soccer team, but we filed for that waiver, then we would be allowed to bring some of our middle school students up to fill out that team. Um, and that hasn't really been done in the fall in the past. It's, it's been used more for some of our, our sports with low participation levels. Um, but in my mind, I think it make, or it makes sense to me to do that this year, uh, because we don't know what numbers are going to look like, and there may be a chance that the middle school students don't get to compete. Uh, because we don't know what's happening with middle school athletic programs right now.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Other questions? So Ryan, since we'll, we'll take up, um, sort of your recommendations at the next meeting, if you want to go into the summer piece or the park and rec piece, whatever you have next on your.
Yep. Um, so just the parks department is just an update, uh, that we, we have an updated contract with the, the Middleborough Park Department, which is a, a positive thing. Um, we're still in, uh, collaboration with them on, on field usage because of, for many reasons, uh, mainly right now the building project, but, uh, also that we think it's important to, um, have a strong relationship with our park department, um, for, for a lot of different reasons, especially related to, to field usage and facilities. Uh, but basically the agreement, uh, that we came to is a one-year agreement, and the changes that were made from our previous agreement are pretty simple. The first one is that the park department is no longer going to maintain the grounds and athletic fields at Middleborough High School. Um, that's going to be handled, um, within our own, within our own school district. Uh, and the second big change is that And the second big change is that the park department, or I'm sorry, the park department will continue to maintain the athletic fields at Nichols Middle School. And that includes, you know, lining the fields, field preparation, setting the bases on the baseball and softball fields, mowing, and a number of different tasks. And then the biggest change is that the park department will, the third piece is that they'll serve as a special contingency plan for school department use of their space and athletic, for athletic contests, practices, recreational activities. So we agreed with them to have a plan in place where if we don't have fields because our building project, the field isn't ready, or we encounter a situation with like triple E, which it looks like we're going to have, or for whatever reason, some unforeseen circumstance, our field goes out of use, then I would get together with the Parks Department Director and coordinate field usage wherever we can in town to make sure that we don't miss a beat with athletics. So that's a positive thing, and it's been, and it's been a good relationship since I've been here.
Ryan, one question that came in that maybe you could answer, which was, has there been any sports that the NMIA has deemed will not play this coming year?
At this time, no. There hasn't been anything that they say we're absolutely not playing. They're still looking at everything. I do think, I hate to say it, you know, without knowing for sure, but I think it's going to be a stretch to have any kind of competitive wrestling. I think that would be the one that's probably at the highest risk level for the situation that we're in. But again, that's one that could be, you know, a practice and conditioning situation where you're not, where you're limiting contact, but a pretty difficult thing to do with a sport like wrestling.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions about the park and rec piece? And welcome, Mr. Oak. I know, and we thank the park and rec department. They've been good neighbors to us, and I think we've been good neighbors to them. And we've, this has been a mutual arrangement that has worked out for both parties.
So the last piece I have, if there's nothing else on that, Mr. Chair, is just a summer athletic clinic update.
Go right ahead.
And real quick, the clinics are in the final week. I think from all accounts, they've been a huge success. It's been exciting to see kids back on campus and active in some of the activities that they love. We had 192 students participating and 18 coaches. We offered strength and conditioning, youth basketball, boys' and girls' basketball, swimming and diving, volleyball, field hockey, and co-ed soccer. I do have one request for tonight, which I was, I guess we can probably wait till next week as far as voting or approval, but with the, with the information that came out, we want to extend the strength and conditioning program. So...
I have no problem in voting that tonight, Ryan. That's not, that's not an issue to me. It was sort of, everything else was sort of overwhelming to look at for the first time. So, but I think, I think extend, we all know that the summer conditioning program has been going on. So it does make sense, given the fact that if you can extend it for a year, it seems to make sense to me that tonight we can vote to extend that piece.
Okay. Yeah, so in that case, we're just looking to take one, a one-week break from the strength and conditioning next week and start it back up the following week until fall sports start on the 18th. And and just so people know, and this will get communicated out, anybody who has already signed up for it, for the strength and conditioning, would just continue on. There's no additional sign up or fee. And then anybody who would be coming in new for those last three weeks before the fall season starts, it would just be a reduced fee from 75 down to 50.
Great. Does anyone have any particular questions about that? Ms. Farley, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. First of all, you did a great job this summer. Both my boys participated. So thank you for getting them out of my house for an hour. But really, my question was, and you may not be able to answer it, but it seemed as though the program went very, very well. But I think if we are able to understand the numbers, did you have any COVID positive? Or was there any issues regarding the COVID? So that parents can kind of feel confident going into the fall sports that this was successful? And that we can be, you know, confident that everything you did worked?
Yeah, so we had, we didn't have any COVID-related issues, but I can tell a quick story of, or I'll just explain kind of how we managed it. That you know, Teresa, we had, every participant had to fill out a quick online survey. We had a web developer create a really simple, inexpensive website for us that just asked the two questions. Have you had any of the COVID symptoms and listed the symptoms? And have you been in contact with anyone known to be test positive for COVID-19? Those had to get filled out and submitted every time somebody came on campus, and the responses went directly to an administrative email that was created for myself. Also, our athletic trainer, Mary Farley, received the emails, and our head football coach, Pat Kingman. And then the other piece, kind of a, to prevent us from missing anything, is that email, they would get to their phone or whatever device they had to show at check-in. And it gave them a pass, basically saying, "I answered no to both these questions with the date on it." And we actually did, what I wanted to say is that we actually did get a few students rejected because they filled the survey out and answered yes to one of the questions. So we immediately called the family and said, "Hey, you can't show up." In some cases, we emailed them, and they said, "Oh, no, I filled, I must have just hit the wrong button. I filled that out incorrectly." So, okay, well, you have to, you have to do another one then. So we didn't actually have any symptomatic participants, but we were able to catch some of those things, just in case.
Great. That's great. Thank you.
Any other, oh, Mr. Oakley, go right ahead.
Sorry, I was muted. That's great to hear. It's nice having these little experiments. I mean, for lack of a better word, you know, how did it turn out in our own town? And so that's great to hear that we had no, no issues. And I wondered from a, like, mask slash handwashing, like, compliance point of view, did you see that for the most part, all student athletes that were part of this were, you know, complied with those things?
Yeah, it's one of those things where you have to constantly be on, like, the high school age and middle school age students. It was something that I know the coaches had to constantly be, Ryan, like, when they showed up, "Hey, make sure you have your mask on." And they all had them with them. I think we had one or two instances where a student forgot their mask, and we gave them a disposable one. But most of what we were doing was outdoors, and with enough spacing where we were able to give the students the option of removing their mask once they were spaced out properly. So it was really more for check-in and checkout, and anytime we had to bring the kids together for instruction or something like that.
Great. Thank you very much for doing this.
Any other questions? Seeing the chair want to entertain a motion to allow the summer program to continue. So I move to her second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing no one, I'll move to roll call vote. Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley? Mr. Row? Mr. Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much, Ryan, and I'm sure we'll be talking next week.
Yeah, I just want to say one more thing before I, before I sign off. I did have a newsletter, like a special edition kind of newsletter, ready to go out tonight in hopes that we would kind of have more information for families that would go out to all our students, families, staff, and everything, which is good because I have it all ready to go. But I do still want to send something out, just giving like an update of, you know, this is still being discussed, it's still, you know, we're still working through it, but here's the potential for what we're trying to do. Do we see any issue? Is there any issue with that? Or would you rather wait until we know for sure this is what we're doing?
No, I think for the most part, everything. If you're comfortable sending something out, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of parents who want to know some information, who won't get it through these means. So I think if you're comfortable sending it out, that's fine. I would just put in there, Ryan, that school committee will be taking up what they need to take up next week. And so nothing's finalized, so to speak.
Right. And I'll leave out the pieces that really need to be decided on and voted on, like the remote learning and the football and practice sessions and things like that. So, great. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I know that was a lot, but it's been a lot going through it, and I appreciate listening.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
So I will go back to Mr. Lynch. You're on mute, Brian.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Dr. Gates? Am I on?
You're on.
Oh, good. Thank you. I just want to provide a quick update with regard to the calendar, and I saw some questions who come in. I think we need to adjust the final day of our 170-day year. And I think we also need to confirm with our PPS director, our MECC principal, and our Director of Curriculum and Grants with regard to the the start date of kindergarten is usually a day later, and preschool usually starts about a week later. So we have to confirm that, so we may have to amend this calendar next week. But we'll post it online for now, you know, with the word draft, because, well, it's approved, actually. But we'll have to make those decisions based on their guidance. And that needs to occur, so my apologies for that. But we'll need to work on that, so.
And, but for the most part, the start of school will remain the same, Brian.
The start of school will be September 15th for most, if not all, students, but we may have a slightly delayed opening for kindergarten, which we experience each year. We put in a calendar each year, and the preschool. And again, my apologies for those two days not being on there. And we'll make a determination if they're going to start on the same day or if we're going to change those accordingly, so.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
Those would be proposed to be probably 9/16 for kindergarten, the starting date, and 9/21 for preschool. So that was, that is going to be the proposal that comes forward.
Okay.
On my report, Mr. Chair, if there's nothing else on the calendar, we're going to move to a grants update with Mrs. Sarah Hickey. There are a number of grants that are involved in COVID-19 and otherwise, and she's going to provide an update for the committee on money and grants. Good thing about grants is they're outside of the operational budget, correct, Mrs. Hickey?
Yes, they are. So thank you, Superintendent Lynch, Chairman Young, and school committee members. I'm here to talk to you about money, and I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk about money coming in, and then I'm going to talk about how it's going out. And I'm going to try to paint a picture of a timeline for you for this. On August 3rd, the superintendent's office received a letter from Senator Mark Pacico's office that, informing us that there was a supplemental appropriation bill authorizing $62,500 for Middleborough Public Schools to be used for distance learning technology for underserved students. In addition to the letter, we didn't really receive anything else, just the letter. So there's this money out there that is going to come in, but we haven't received anything further. So I made a phone call to Senator Pacico's office, and I apologize because I'm going to absolutely kill the last name, but I have been in contact with Mary Wasilek, who is Senator Pacico's Chief of Staff, and we're hoping to get more information about the guidelines for this, this monies that will be coming to the Middleborough Public Schools. On October 14th, I received a notification from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that our ESER grant, and ESER stands for the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. So on August 14th, I received the information that that grant was approved for us. This grant requires us to provide equitable services to all eligible schools within the town of Middleborough. So I had to, in the process of applying for this grant, I had to reach out to all of the private nonprofit schools within the border of Middleborough, and the Chamberlain International School communicated with me that they were interested in taking part in this grant. And so that grant totals $364,274, of which $8,164 of that is earmarked for the Chamberlain International School. And then today, I received a press release from the governor's office that our Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant was approved. So the governor had $32.9 million awarded to 253 school districts, and the Middleborough Public Schools was awarded $6,892 in that grant opportunity. And then in addition to these three things I just mentioned, as you know, we're applying to Plymouth County for reimbursements for COVID expenses. So those are the four sources of money that are, that are coming in. And then as far as the money going out, the Remote Learning Technology Essentials Grant is going to be used for internet connectivity for students and families that need access to the internet in order to do remote or online learning. The ESER grant, a portion of the salary of our new coordinator of nursing is being paid out of the ESER grant. I already mentioned the equitable services to the Chamberlain International School, and then the bulk of that grant, approximately $99,000, is going to go towards PPE supplies, and approximately $191,000 will go to software and supplies to facilitate remote and hybrid learning. And then, as I had said earlier, the funds obtained through Senator Pacico's office, the letter just states that they will fund distance learning for underserved students. And that's the extent of what I know about that monies right now. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hickey? I do want to make a comment before you say something, Rich, because you just showed up on my screen, so I didn't know you had a question. But Sarah, I want to thank you. I mean, as much as everybody else has been working on plans and this and that, you've been working to make sure we, we get every grant and every dollar for every school kid. So I really appreciate that from your perspective, so thank you. And Mr. Oakley, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just, it wasn't really a question. I was just going to say thank you for all your work to bring in this money. Although I suppose I could come up with a question. In like really basic round numbers, not going to pin you down to anything specific, the amount of money that we've had to spend or will have to spend on COVID-related processes or technology, do these grants make us whole? Or are we still very much into our own pockets on a lot of this?
Well, that's, that's actually a tough question to answer because the guideline, so as far as these grants, these grants are great, and this is money we know we can count on. The big question mark is the Plymouth County. We believe, for a lot of things, that we're going to submit, that we will be reimbursed. But as, as far as that process, I'm not sure. What happens if we go forward and say, for example, purchase a HEPA filter for a nurse's office that doesn't have a window? And then what happens if they say, "No, you can't have money for that?" So for the most part, I think we will be made whole, but there's, or what happens when the Plymouth County money dries up? I don't know what happens at that point. So I can't hazard a guess at this point right now. We do hope that all of our COVID expenses will be covered by these many sources. And again, the letter from Senator Pacico's office pretty much came in out of the blue, and it's nice when you get a letter that says here there's going to be $62,500 coming to you that you didn't even know about.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much for coordinating all that.
Other questions? And again, thank you very much, Sarah, for all your hard work this summer. We appreciate it.
And Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. I would just add a little subset that we did order at the end of June as part of the COVID relief and hopeful for reimbursement. About 1,000 or so desks that will make it easier to social distance. And we've received about 740 of them already, which is good. We're still waiting on the MKG desk, but we have received the Nichols Middle School desk. Uh, we're still waiting on the M K G desk, but we have received the Nichols Middle School desk, we've received the H B B desk and we've received the M E C desks. So those desks are being assembled and being put in, placed into classrooms and uh, arranged by our custodians. So we thank our custodians. And we have a summer crew every year of, of high school and college kids that help out. And uh, they're putting these together and they're getting real good at it. So uh, we do appreciate that. That's just a little bit of an update on, on part of that and, and, and Rich, to Mr. Oakley too, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I just want to say that uh, everything that we can find that's COVID-related, we're going to submit to Plymouth County. The problem with Plymouth County grant, and you've heard statewide that each school department is going to get two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. That's not the case in Plymouth County, unfortunately. Um, maybe it ends up being more, I'm not sure. Uh, but what we have to do with, with the difference between the state sort of is treating it as a grant and, and sending that money to school systems. In Plymouth County, they're making it a reimbursable grant. So we have to spend the money out of our operational budget first and then hopefully get reimbursed. For example, the thousand desks that are required to make it work in our school system to have students in or, or so, the two thousand Chromebooks and four hundred or two, three hundred and fifty laptops that we've ordered that are, have been delayed, as you heard tonight, those are, we're putting in as reimbursable. So all of these things we are submitting to reimbursable. I had a meeting with Lance Benjamina and uh, our fire chief who's coordinating this effort for Middleborough, uh, along with the, the chief of police and the town manager and the building inspector the other day as part of my monthly meetings with them. Uh, there's a good deal of frustration being uh, expressed by Fire Chief Benjamina about this process. He's worked with FEMA before, he's worked with federal grants, uh, and he is pretty frustrated about this process right now. And hopefully things will get better. Um, and uh, hopefully, once we receive these two thousand Chromebooks, we then submit the receipt or the cash check or whatever, copy of the check, a- and hopefully we'll get that money from Plymouth County. Uh, you know, looking forward to those days when we start to get money back instead of putting money out. But uh, we can certainly identify all of these efforts as COVID-related. We would not be buying these thousand, eleven hundred desks if it weren't for COVID. We would not be buying the two thousand Chromebooks for distance learning if it had not been for Chrome, uh, for, for COVID. So that's what, that's how the grant is working right now. And that's sort of the, the frustration we're feeling in town and the frustration we're feeling, I guess, through, through uh, through the superintendent's office, if you will, and the business office of the superintendent. So. So just a little, little bit more information on that for you and for the committee. So you have an idea of where we're scoring with some of this. Uh, the furniture was promised in three to four weeks and it did arrive in three to four weeks. So thank you to the Verco Company. They make great, great uh, student furniture. Uh, and they were true to their word in terms of their deliverability, although we are still waiting on one school. So that's my, that's the, concludes my general update, Mr. Chair, and, and I hand it back to you uh, for the vote on the consent agenda.
So I just want to um, make clear to everyone that there is sort of a broad outline of what's reimbursable under Plymouth County. Um, and so the administration is following that, um, those pieces to make sure that everything fits into those categories that we are allowed to do. Um, some uh, communities have started to receive money. Um, and hopefully Middleborough will be on that list pretty quickly. But um, so I just wanted to o- offer that for everybody. Um, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair one?
Oh, sorry. I was going to take the, the Brian Givinoni um, line. Um, I, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda um, as presented.
Second?
Um, discussion. Hearing none, just so everyone knows, consent agenda for us is just approval of minutes. Um, Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
It's Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, the, hold on one second as I get to that page in my, in my sheet. I believe the next item on our agenda um, goes to action items. Uh, the first is again, I sent notice to the school committee members that the superintendent and I had um, uh, reached determination that given what's going on, we should probably meet weekly. And so since that's an unusual request, I put it on the action item to ask that if I could have a motion for us to meet weekly.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Uh, discussion? It just, again, it just makes sense, given everything that's going on and everything that's changing. As everyone can see, there's new directives and new dialogue that comes out each and every day. And I know this because I think Mr. Rowe sends it to me the moment it comes out, so we can have um, but yeah, so it, it's been a little crazy. And so there are things that we have to approve. For example, um, like the pieces about athletics, uh, to make sure the athletic department runs in a way, but um, you know, and the problem becomes that that thing's running, being voted by M I A late on Wednesday. And so by the time Ryan gets the, you know, puts everything together so we can see it comes in today. And I just need to make sure that we have time to look at things and we're not waiting weeks for us to meet. That's all. And so I appreciate everyone for that. And with the motion, I'll ask for a vote. Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Ms. Farley?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, the next item on our agenda was technology surplus. Um, there was a list of technology in our department that um, it, it had been decided that there's no longer use to the Middleborough Public Schools. Um, just so everyone understands what happens with this material per our policy is that first it's offered to the town to see if anyone wants it. And then we figure out a way, the best way to get rid of it. Uh, so any questions about that? It's a usual thing for us. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the um, technology surplus. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. I'll go around. Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Um, before I end the meeting, does anyone have anything they need to bring up or comment about? Our next meeting will be August twenty-seventh, which is next Thursday. Um, and seeing no further discussion, the chair would like a motion to enter into executive session for procedure number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, I do so declare, and we will not come back into open sessions but to close our meeting out. Do I have a motion?
That's a move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, there's no discussion and a motion to move into executive session. Um, we'll go around. Ms. Farley?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
It's Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Oakley?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Rowe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We thank everybody for participating. We hope we answered your question. If we didn't, please send the questions to the administrators or to the principals and you'll get answers. And we thank everybody and wish you a good night and see you next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.